Okay, you're live.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, November nineteenth, Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to Order. I don't have the agenda in front of me because the main item tonight is to continue a conversation about our annual board goals and objectives, but do we typically call roll for these? I don't think we call roll. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the support. So let's just dive right in. And just as a reminder for anyone who might be watching this, the purpose of the Committee of the Whole Meeting is really to give the board an opportunity to have some open discussion about issues that are important to us or about new ideas that we want to try to move forward. So we chose to use this forum in lieu of our regular business meeting or our study sessions to continue conversation about our annual goals. We brought to you a list of the three topics that we had settled on for our annual goals at the at an earlier board meeting on October twenty seven, twenty second, but this is our first conversation to continue to refine those goals and to identify objectives for moving forward. So I think that each board member has had a chance to review a policy eighteen ten that outlines the responsibility to set annual goals and objectives. And again, this is our attempt to continue that conversation. So just because this really is about discussion and getting ideas on the table so that we can hear from each other and understand where we are thinking, where we're at in terms of thinking about each of these topics. Also, I think an opportunity for staff, Carla and Josh and others to hear what we're thinking, where we want to go. So to help just frame the conversation, board members have also had a chance to review materials that we were briefed on in the past. So on in February twenty twenty meeting, we reviewed some good detailed information from staff about our current work related to mental health and wellness. We also had a great briefing from staff last May on family and community engagement and partnerships. So we have that material as a bit of background about current work in the district, but this conversation is really to be anchored in. What does the board want to see and what, how does the board want to engage on these topics moving forward? So I'll stop there and just open up to members of the board to start with just, we settled on these broad topics of racial justice and equity, social emotional well-being and mental health, and then family and student engagement. But those are big topics. So I think today we really need to start honing in on what do these things mean to us? And then to get to what are some objectives that we can, we think that we can meaningfully accomplish in a year. So on the topic of what do they mean? What do they mean to you? And what's your vision for how the board, the singularity between what staff is doing? What's your vision for how the board should be engaged on these topics? So I don't have to call on you all, but I can too. But I always want to open it up whoever wants to share first. We have about twenty minutes for this conversation and it doesn't have to be the end, twenty minutes to begin this conversation.
I'm happy to start. Well, I think we have, you know, I'm really excited about these three goals. I think they're really on top of mind for all of us as a result of COVID and some of the things that have also the conversations we've been having in community around race and racial justice and equity. And so, and obviously, family, student engagement are always top of mind. So I think my thoughts on, you know, sort of what they mean to me and what, how I'd like to, how I think, how I'd like to vision the board engaging in the goals. For racial justice and equity, I think we, we have to honestly address, address our existing biases in our own system, in TPS's system and structures, and try and assess where, you know, where we're falling apart in terms of meeting our equity objectives as a, on a policy level, as well as an implementation level. And, you know, and then, and then in addition to looking internally and focusing on how we operate as, as a, in Tacoma Public Schools, I think it's imperative that we also align our work with our colleagues in the county, in the city, and the hard work that they're doing around racial equity and racial justice. And in particular, I know you know about this, but we're going to, we're with JMAC, the Joint Municipal Action Council Committee. We're working to put out an RFP and get some help to have JMAC as an entity, you know, align our work around in the community and with a focus on racial equity. So I think our playing in, as a board, as a board commit, commitment to that committee, I think that's a great way we can, we can actually be true to our commitment. I think on social and emotional learning and well-being and mental health, we have stepped up, I think, as an, as a system, our commitment to SEL engagement from, it used to be just in the elementary and now we're requiring plans this year for the first time from all of our schools, secretary included. And I think that it's incumbent upon us as the board to really keep an eye on that and to really dive into those plans and make sure that, that the social emotional learning component is consistent throughout from, from the day a student walks into our schools until the day they leave, that they're getting that support and provide, as well as also providing the appropriate supports for mental health with, which will also come with our partners. And I know we've had a great deal of conversation and some listening sessions on, on mental health. And so I think we just need to continue to focus on that and to take that to the next level. And then I think on the family and student engagement, I want to think we, you know, just need to increase families' feelings of connectedness with our schools. And to a large degree, also have family, make sure that families understand the academic and social goals and objectives. And I think while that is an implementation level, often at the administration, it's Carla and, and teams' job to help and the principals, you know, to help get that message out. I think it's incumbent upon us as a board to drive that conversation and to make, make it clear at board meetings when we adopt curriculum, when we do other things, when we set policies, how that impacts what the goals and objectives for each student is. And, and then when it comes to student participation in their education, I mean, we, we have got to ensure that our policies and that what we're putting out there really is, is doing that. So I think the two things I think we could do right away are, one is, is speaking on equity. I'd like to propose that we begin each board meeting with, with an Indigenous land acknowledgement and Indigenous people's land acknowledgement. I, I like, I think that it's an opportunity to thank and recognize that we are sitting on a land that was colonized, that people lived here first and, and we've taken it on. So I think that would be particularly helpful. And then the other thing is, in order to understand perceptions across racial and ethnic groups, I think we, we ought to do listening sessions on this topic as well as all of the topics. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Does anybody else want to go next? And I like how you woven both your thoughts about it and some thoughts about objectives. It was like very succinct. Anyone else want to go next?
I can go if you'd like. Do you want us to do that? Just kind of roll in?
Sure. If it feels right to you, sure.
It's whatever you want. I can do the same thing.
Yeah, that's.
Right. Good. And then that way at least we stay in one train of thought per person and then we can come back maybe if you're all okay with that. So.
Yeah, ask questions. Yep.
All right. So on racial justice and equity, I think just, you know, my, I think we asked for, what does it mean to us? Right? So I think each racial group has access to, you know, I want each racial group to have access to reach the same outcomes. Like that's my definition of equity, those good high outcomes. You know, some groups may need more resources, some less resources to reach the same outcomes, or some different resources to reach same outcomes. Just the community knows it's not the same equal number of, you know, computers or, or goals, goalposts or books that have everybody reach the same level playing field. Some people may need differences in those things. So I think that just, we all understand that, but I think it's important for the whole community who's listening to, to remember that piece. When it comes to engagement, I think really kind of an equally high academic outcome when it comes to, you know, also the, the discipline, statistics should also be equalized, graduate graduation statistics, things like the Vanny Verified, what does it, what's the A stand for? Accredited.
Acceptance to the next institution.
Next institution, exactly. Verified acceptance to the next institution. Criminal justice statistics, so basically, you know, our kids, so by, by race, I'd like to eventually have it all equal, have, have, it shouldn't be this big disparity in one group being more in criminal justice system or being expelled more often. So that is long-term goals. Adequate progress may be, we may measure by having, I think we're, we're already, I don't think, I know we're already working on this, having implicit bias training for all staff. I think it's, it's also part of social emotional learning curriculum. But having that just really be spelled out, where does it happen? How often does it happen for staff? Students also, and really parents too, I mean, the whole community. But we're not, you know, working in a vacuum here. I think it's important we work in partnership as Dr. Bond, as Director Bond Bright has said already. Exclusionary statistics, also, I think something that we could look at as, as an improvement, because I think one of our questions down the line is, what will we look at as success? I would say something as bold as, you know, twenty-five or fifty percent improvement in closing the gap in one year. That's a lot with eventual goal to get to equity, right? Action plans can be, you know, implemented obviously by the superintendent regarding bias trainings, the resources to staff distributed to schools and need to help kind of in closing those gaps. On the social emotional well-being, mental health piece, most of that, to me, that means emotional safety really of each student and staff to reach their full potential. You know, we worry mostly about students, but it's also important for staff to have this so they can be the best staff member in, in their role. So while this leads obviously to safety at home and the rest of their life, you know, we, we have, we're, we're concentrating on the school day, but really what we teach expands out into the rest of people's lives. Prevention and, you know, identification of mental health problems, this is also not working in a vacuum with partners, kind of using the tools to improve, kind of with the appropriate referrals to the partner organizations. These are all things that I would see as, as ways to get to this point, to this, to these goals. The vision could be, you know, engage and increase kind of the, and maybe restart students, separate parent listening sessions, as, as Director Bombard has already talked about, listening sessions. We've already done them, so I'm saying kind of restart them and include, include some parent listening sessions. And something, we could do something in the range of, you know, one high school per year, per, per director, but we wouldn't get all the high schools. It'd like, be nice to be able to get to every high school every year though. So maybe two high schools per year, per director, each middle school, maybe three of the elementary schools. That would be one way to measure this. And another, there would be adequate progress would be to, you know, decrease the, the, the rates that kids are admitting to being, feeling anxious, depressed, and thoughts of suicide in the health surveys, decrease those by twenty-five, fifty percent per year. It's not measured every year. It happens every two years. So that could be adjusted for, you know, every two years. We get, we do that measurement in the state. Those are just ideas of what we could measure. When it comes to family and student engagement, you know, I think we all probably different ideas on what engagement could look at. It could look like lots of different things, but engaged students and families really help, you know, students perform better in school and afterwards in life. So that could look like increasing student, you know, it means student achievement builds partnerships, better communication so that families and students know what district initiatives are, obviously empowering families and their communities to, to feel like they can have a voice, know the ins and outs of what is expected of, of their students and also what they can expect of staff and what they can do themselves to, to contribute to the education. Closing communication gaps between families and communities. So I've got several ideas. Some of these I, I got from a, some research into what Chicago Public Schools are doing, but not all of them. And some I got a little bit from Federal Way Public Schools, but volunteer programs that, you know, kind of welcomes parents, community stakeholders who wish to contribute. There's a lot of volunteering in the, this, I'm talking, this is pre-COVID, can happen with COVID, it can have, it's going to happen after COVID. So it happens a lot in elementary schools, but then comes to middle schools and high schools, volunteers aren't really welcomed into those places as much. But I think there's, there should be ways to do that and help and, and welcome volunteer parents somehow into the teaching experience. Consider parent kind of a collaborative or advisory council somehow, sharing information, building leadership capacities, you know, monthly meetings potentially with parents and community members from all schools, or maybe you, maybe it's just Title One schools, but I think really all schools. They work to empower parents, you know, to really to inspire and assist their children that can achieve an educational goals. One of them, of course, graduated from high school. I'll, I'll be more brief here on the last two points. I don't want to take up all the time here. The parent university is something I guess Chicago does where they offer parent and guardians and community members classes. So things like they teach them the SEL classes and training, equity training, some of the training the teachers get, but not on top. So some of the basics is how to teach training. And then local school councils could also be made up of parents, community residents, staff, principals, in order to help make decisions. And, you know, sometimes it sounds scary to let everyone in on decision-making room, but I think that's really the, the, the way some of the best institutions and organizations work is really to be inclusive. So. Thank you. Okay, next.
Anybody itching to go next?
No. I won't, I won't say itching because I, you know, I don't, but there are some things that I could, you know, kind of point out that I was thinking about as I got to look at the agenda a little bit last night. I noticed that, so racial justice and equity. Now, I'm just going to be honest. I'm going to spew some stuff. I might not have a solution, but I think that that's what we can tag team and, and look at. But racial justice, like obviously fair treatment for all students. I think that when I think about my time in the high schools, when students are getting in trouble, it's because they feel like they are not being treated fairly or not being treated equal. What, how, how do we look at that at a policy level to? Again, this is my first go around with this, but we're operating on a policy level. I got to keep myself up there. So when I'm thinking about this, what can we lay out to ensure that obviously everybody's being treated equal? Because if a student sees Johnny in detention for something that they just did, and they do the same thing, but they get suspended or sent home, obviously they're going to act out. What, what are some ways we can think to, to remedy those things? Social and emotional well-being? I'm thinking about, what do I have? Like what's currently going on in, in students' lives, families' lives that are impacting their current situation? Like, those, those are some conversations that we have to have with the community. And I guess that feeds directly into family and student engagement, like what, what's needed? I, I think that there's a, the reason why, you know, family engagement sometimes is so low is because this is more of a what can you do for me type of situation? Like I get off work at six o'clock. Why do I need to come up to the school and do this, this and that? So what can you do for me as a parent? Obviously other than provide, educate my child, but that's going to make me want to be there, you know? Like what's going to make me want to engage? And that, that's one thing that we can do. It's provide surveys or whatever and get, create a space that allows the family and the community to feel comfortable in being honest, like not forcing you to complete this survey, but we want to serve you. We want to work at a policy level to serve you, but we need you to feel comfortable and honest in these spaces. So that's one thing, like I, I asked, I can't remember who I was talking to, but I've been talking to a lot of people lately about like, how do we do that? Is it okay to sit down with communities as a board member? And, and let them tell us how they really feel. The only way that we can really move toward active, like change and moving toward higher numbers of family engagement and student engagement is if we can sit down and, and have honest conversations about where folks are. So that was my first go with that. I hope that was okay.
We're, this, we're all in this together. Every little bit of input from each one of us counts. Not that you gave only a little bit of input, but every bit counts. Lisa, you want me to go first?
Um, I'll go. So the, the racial justice and equity, I sat with that one quite a bit because I feel like we've talked about SEL and family engagement in more depth than we really have as a collective on racial justice and equity. So I'm going to just read what I wrote, the thoughts I wrote, because I think what I wrote was better than what I'll stammer through. And so, and again, like Cory's, to Cory's point, like I also think about operationals, operations first. And then I'm like, nope, it's not, that's not my lane. And how do I pull back from that? And so it's really, you know, being involved in school settings, it's, it's easy for me to consider some of these issues or these goals, I should say, in an operational standpoint. So in terms of, so what I wrote around racial justice and equity, board policy decision, board policies, decisions and advocacy at state, at local, state and federal levels are made through the lens of those most impacted by systematic racism, racism and inequities who are historically marginalized and underrepresented. Equity and racial justice to me are not separate. They're intertwined. And so I think that it's easy to use the word equity. And I know there's criticisms around people using equity as a buzzword, but what is the action behind that? To me, it's like the word ally, being an ally is actually a verb and equity has to have an action plan to it, in my opinion. So the other things I wrote, like race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity and socioeconomic status are all intersections of the students and staff we serve. And so to me, this goal is, it's a grounding rod to advancing this work and also being able to identify and address, right? If we don't even, if we're not aware of the problem, we can't address the problem. And, and so measuring that, I'm, I'm not, I'm curious to hear Andrea's thoughts on, you know, like just as far as like how to measure that? Because I think I feel a little, I'm uncertain on how to proceed in that, that way. Social emotional well-being and mental health, I mean, this, we've spent a lot of time talking about mental health specifically. So then a goal, like I wonder, like, how do we then, you know, we've heard from students. They've, they've been very clear in the things that, that they need and they need more, they need more support. And then I think, how do we do that at a board level? Because the funding is always going to be a barrier and an issue. So, but I think that the steps around, Elizabeth mentioned, the SEL plans, like each building have a plan, is really tangible in a way that we can see the results of that. And then with family engagement, I'm listening to Cory's comments about, you know, what can you do for me? And well, I just got off of work and in a racial justice, racial equity training that Elizabeth and I did in the spring, one of the presenters said that an invitation is not inclusion. So how are we actually including families? So saying, well, but we, we had an open house, but they didn't, the families didn't come. Well, did you meet them where they are at? Did you provide food? Was it, you know, an opportunity to have a meal together? You know, the idea of engagement, I know Josh has said, I've heard him say a number of times, that we have to, you know, like what's the definition that we're working under, right? So we have to identify like, or be on a the same page on what is engagement and what is engagement to us in reference, reference to this goal. And so I think Enrique had talked about, at least I think I heard you talk about, like being mindful of how we're communicating and language, I know, has been a goal to increase the number of languages and the ways that we are communicating with. And I think for family engagement and student engagement, a communication strategy for us as a board is also going to be really help, like a helping, like a guide for us to determine like, how do we want to engage? And I, I know early in, or not in early, sometime in June, we were talking about doing a town hall and with all the events and everything else, we haven't come back to that. And so how do we engage with families, particularly because it seems like we're going to be in this virtual setting for some time, which like just amplifies the challenges on engagement. So, but I definitely think it's possible and, you know, while also trying not to create more work for the, for Carla and her team, but also, you know, making sure that we are maybe aligning our objectives with what is already being implemented. I think, I don't know if that really made too much sense, but I'm going to pause there.
Thank you. I always, I always take the privilege of going last because then you all inform my thinking. So I really appreciate getting the benefit of hearing from you all. So I'll share and then maybe we'll go around and see if we have questions about each other's comments and then maybe talk about some next steps. Okay. So on the racial justice and equity piece, I think it was you, Lisa, who might have said this. We haven't had as much conversation about this as a group as we've had about some of the other topics. So I'm excited to like continue this conversation. But some of what you all shared about fairness and resonates with me. Leaning into here on this one, on the policy front is what really stands out to me and thinking about the structure where we have the greatest control and how do we from the beginning set a tone in our policymaking that facilitates some more equitable outcome, not to say that, I think policy is always the starting point and implementation and practice and action is more of the end. But from this policy standpoint, I think that we're in a position to think about how we set up a more equitable structure from, for the, from the beginning. And when I think about equity, like the, the notion and the concept, the way that Director Leon Enrique, you put it about, it's not always going to be equal, but all students have access to the resources and supports that they need to reach the high goals that we set for them or that hopefully we set with them and that starts to get at the student engagement piece. But all students have the support they need to get to the goalpost. So I just think that that really pushes on a different, different mindset for some folks. For some people, that's the lens that they always look through, but it's, I think we grow up sort of taught to think about equality. And so shifting to thinking about equity is hard, like you always cut the sandwich down the middle and like with your siblings, you're like mad if you didn't get an equal share. So I think there are some reflexes that you have to like put on pause and know that they're not the right ones to leverage in certain contexts and just building that in from the policy start. So on that item, then I think about our policies generally. Like when I got on the board, you try to be a good student, you read everything, but you don't read it through the lens of, what does this look like in terms of racial equity or equity overall? You're just like reading it to get exposed to the content. And then when we have a policy that needs to be revised because there's been a change of a law or some other piece of context has changed, we get presented with it and then you're like, oh, but what about this too? Like our discipline policy was that for me. So I do think it would be a good and worthwhile exercise to have some kind of review of all of our policies. But at the same time, as a pre-cursor step to that, we need to have a way, a format for that. Like you can't just say, do an equity and bias review, like what does that mean? Like what does that look like in terms of a process? What are the look fours? What are the criteria? But I think maybe identifying some, some protocol for doing some kind of equity or bias or review would be a good thing, not the thing, but might be a good thing. And then applying that. And then really seeing kind of what, what are those policies, maybe that seem to be red flags from that review? And maybe we should look then about whether or not its implementation is having a disparate impact based on the fact that from the start, or maybe staff have really figured out how to counter our bad policy and are doing things to overcome the words on paper. So I don't. and are doing things to overcome the words on paper. So I don't know how that would land, but I just think that um, having some intentionality around our policymaking and getting a review and the policies that we have on the books, some of which honestly probably haven't been a, a doc, updated in far too long, but there hasn't been a legal reason to change, so we haven't touched it. So that's a thought that I had. Um, on the social emotional well-being and mental health front, I think a lot of um, what Director Leon talked about in terms of partnerships just echoes the conversations we've had in the past about we can't do all this alone. And we need to think about both the health and well-being of our educators and our students. And with this one and with the first two, and I think with all of these, some people discount um, perception data. But a part of me just like, I just went to your question earlier, Lisa, about measurement, a part of me just like, it needs to feel better. Like people need to feel better, like about the level of family engagement piece, the student engagement piece, you know, you just feel it. And you walk into some schools, you feel it. You walk into some, like off uh, businesses in the world or restaurants even that serve or greet you, you just feel it. So some of this, like I'm looking for the feel and then we also have to think about how we measure our progress too. But on this front, I think um, some, I feel like there's still so much that is in the world of um, operations. But I am really excited about our move to in the strategic plan add the social emotional um, learning plans at all levels. And I I have hundred percent agree with Director Bond by plan about digging into those because it, they could be really instructive for us in terms of our policymaking around mental health and well-being and that piece that we were looking, when we had these conversations earlier. Part of the reason we moved to the listening sessions because we didn't want to put the cart before the horse in terms of strategy or policy, like policy priorities. So I do think that will be um, good for us to dig into. Um, I was going back through the materials that were presented to us um, at the February meeting and I really liked and the recommendation that came from the team around the wellness policy for, at the board level and aligning some of the um, contract language with the whole educator. There's a reference to like well, um, wellness leave and that kind of thing. So from a policy standpoint, I do like, and, and, and maybe it's a way to sort of operationalize some of the values that we have around this in policy. So I don't know if that's feasible, but from a policy standpoint, I, I did like that recommendation that came from the team. And then on the family and student engagement front, I agree with everything that you all offered earlier um, about um, um, an invitation not being um, inclusion or whatever the phrase was. I also heard too related to one of Director Stroger's points about, why should I come? I got off work at six. Someone once said to me, like, when you're talking about family and community engagement, you gotta throw a party that you wanna go to. Like so, and I think um, Amanda Scott Thomas, I'm sure she a hundred percent ascribes to that philosophy. But just thinking about the ways that we try to engage, we gotta make it work, feel worthwhile. Like it can't be too dry, it can't be too stuffy, it can't be too formal. That's to be real. So that sense of realness and authenticity is what I hope that we move toward in our engagement efforts. And so on the student front and continuing with the listening sessions is something I want us to consider. Um, also working to really engage our student board members and we never ask them formally about their experience or get their like formal feedback to improve the next year's engagement. So maybe applying a little bit of our continuous improvement approach to that. Um, really listening to what we can do to make that experience to help them get as much out of it as we can. Um, uh, also in the materials from the previous general engagement presentation, there was reference to the continued work on our new policy forty-one thirty. I'm just thinking, uh, just wanting to know where we're at. I know this year has been crazy, but wanting to know where that stands and if that's something that we can um, think about as a means for really um, getting staff input on what like co-design, like those strat engagement strategies, like what it, should it look like? Through the development of that policy, can we use that engagement with families who are hopefully giving some input on it to help inform those strategies that we should use at each of those levels, elementary and secondary to meaningfully engage them. And then just
Yeah. Could you just for the good of the order, explain again what that policy forty-one thirty is so that I'm sure a lot of folks listening don't know what that is?
I don't remember the exact title, but that was our family engage or partnership policy or family engagement. I don't remember the specific title, but I can if, I'll look at it once we open it for comments. I'll look back to that. Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, but just generally with both family engagement and student engagement, just to, I think, uh, being more transparent about what we heard and what we did with it. I think that is maybe a place where we might fall down or where we could stand up taller is like with the listening sessions, we heard some things pretty clearly. And we haven't had the right, we haven't been in a position to really act on a lot of what we heard, just because of how this year and end of last year have gone, but like really being intentional about reflecting back to people who take the time to partner with us different ways. How, what we heard and how we incorporated it into what we do moving forward. Um, I'll stop there. Any questions or comments too between one another or other thoughts that people have now that we've heard from each other?
Yeah, thanks. I guess um, having, having gone first and then listened to all of your, oh, 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 got so many things to, to add. Um, but I did wanna address one of the things that Director Keating was saying um, about the advocacy and, and I do think that that is a big role of the board and um, especially since uh, we have a potential to really help push the county through with its one percent um, mental health tax, which is looking um, much more positive in, in January that they may do that. And that is gonna make a big difference in, in how our county can address some of the mental health issues. So I'm thinking about if we as a group have a conversation about how we perceive that that might be um, used or helpful in some of the work we're doing, um, again with J Mac or with others, then we can um, we can, can help some of the other districts who haven't had a chance to really discuss this deeply. We can share some of our learnings. Um, so that's one, one way. Um, I love the town hall bit. Yes, we sort of dropped that because of COVID, we ended up not being able to do that. So I, I think that's a great idea. Um, I totally vote for our equity and bias review of our policies. I think that that is essential for it to give us a a stand, a framework of where we are and where we have gaps. Um, and so I think, I think a lot of the, what all of you have said, and I, and I love the, back to the idea of um, Director Stroger's point about, you know, the party and whether you want, you wanna be there for it. I mean, I do think that, that that's gonna take um, some creativity and um, some listening, because some parents are perfectly happy to come after school at six o'clock and be there. And others, you're never gonna get them to do that. So how do we start thinking differently about, you know, it's just like you can't just have a one assembly or one party. I mean, maybe people, you have to have different kinds of parties or different kinds of events that attract different, different people with this, then you give the same message when you get there, but it just means that we're gonna have to be um, thinking uh, how we reach. It just made me realize when you said that, um, Cory, that it made me realize that so many things we say here at a board meeting, it, when it falls on someone's ears, some people, it resonates and like right on and other people like, what the heck are you talking about? So we have, it's gonna, we need to do some thoughtful um, processing about how we present some of the policies that we're considering, so people really understand the potential impact of what we're doing and that they uh, and they see themselves in it. Um, and so that's just something for us to think about in, in our own communication.
That, that too, it, it builds trust within the community. Like I think about earlier, I was thinking about uh, flipping the golden rule and the silver rule, like treat others the way they wanna be treated. But I'm gonna put, talk to, talk to people the way they wanna be talked to. That's the silver rule now. We, we wanna make sure that, because the way we talk about things here, like you just said, it just falls. You know what I'm saying? Because people don't speak like, the, the people we're trying to engage and reach, they don't talk like this. So we have to find ways to engage with them in certain ways that they can relate to. And the more comfortable they feel, the more they trust us, the more they come out, the more they bring your kids out and the more they're engaged. But they have to see themselves in the work. If they don't, you know, we can chalk it up.
I just, um, do others have thoughts? Your comments for one another? I have kind of a process thing, but I'll hold it until we get through more of the substance directly on.
Sure, um. Yeah, it's great, great conversation we're having here. I just think it's so important. Um, and uh, yeah. There's not enough time for this conversation, but we're gonna, we're gonna busting it up here. Um, I think the uh, your piece, your thoughts about the review of the policies, I think is a really good idea. I think this is a place where we can really engage the community to join us and help review the policies. I mean, this is a place where probably be a lot of uh, parents, um, students also, please, let's include the students as much as we can. Student voice to help review these policies. Doesn't have to be just staff members, but it could be a staff member, you know, working with all those other people. Also to re- review these policies. As you said, um, it made me think, uh, I think I saw some facial expressions from all of you, that maybe there's some policies that aren't very good, but staff have worked around to to make things still work out well. But we shouldn't count on that, right? We should have good policies and not count on the staff to work around and make it right. Um, that's more work, cause someday there may not be a good staff member there or, or staff member intentionally trying to make things wrong for, for someone. So let's not have that as a, as a, as a thing that, that could potentially happen. Um, I think that uh, you know, as we talk about, I'm gonna focus on engagement a little bit here, I guess. You know, a lot of these families that don't engage, it's not because they don't love or care about their kid. Cause we know pretty much every, almost everybody does. Yes, there's a few parents that are, are not good parents, but um, a lot of it is, is financial uh, barrier really. So it's finances, it's poverty, working lots, lots of jobs, it's, you know, parents that aren't, you know, single parents. They wanna do things, but they, they don't have time to do it. So we gotta really kind of make things easier for those communities. Simple things like, I learned the past few years that, you know, I just thought everybody had a field day, right? This is a little thing. Not every school has a field day because it, they rely on parent volunteers to come and do that. There's a lot of schools that don't have the simple thing, I guess maybe people call it a different thing, field day, people know what I'm talking about, where they play all the sports and funny things and have a good time. Um, so why don't we, why don't we partner up a school that has lots of parent involvement with a school that doesn't have a lot of parent involvement? You go do the field day at that school with less parent involvement. All the parents go over them, maybe hey, some parents do make it and that school has a field day. I mean, this is just a little, little idea. Um, same thing goes for summer camps, right? Not everybody, not summer camp. Uh, fifth grade camp, I think it's called, right? Not every school goes to fifth grade camp. And that is, that, that's something I think we, we, and that's resources also. The mental health tax, oh, please let us, I don't know what the laws are around us lobbying for that, but I would love to lobby in any way, shape or form to help us with that mental health tax, because it is just going to improve the health, not just of the students, but the whole community. Um, and student leaders, um, I'll pause here because uh, one of the Wazda talks today um, was about student engagement and many of you may have heard it, our, our student rep was on there, Jasmine, so. Um, but leadership doesn't always look like our student board rep. You know, student board reps are, are like these, you know, super high achieving people typically, right? But we need leadership from everyone, from lots of runs and places um, where students live and are. So uh, something that apparently Federal Way Schools does is something they call, uh, what do they call it? You talk, we listen. Uh, where they have a big uh, consortium way to have the students do these listening sessions. And they have teachers that pick out uh, one or two students from every classroom, every home room, and they don't pick the traditional like captain of this or, you know, whoever's the top of something or other. It's all kids can lead and, and we need to look for leadership from all uh, avenues in our, in our kids to, in order to be representative. And started thinking of, you know, and also that goes all the, all the way down to all the grade levels, you know, look for uh, input at all grade levels, not just the high school. I'll pause again, thanks.
Doing a time check, we have um, for the community, many of us are trying to attend part of our state association's meeting that happens right after weekend. So we only have a few more minutes, but I still wanna preserve time for others to reflect on what you heard and then offer a few options for next steps. Director Keating, Director Stroger, you have other comments? And if not, um, um, Carla or Josh, do you wanna offer any reflection? Carla? The mute button's still getting you. You're still muted. There you go.
It's gonna be written on my tombstone. I'm mute. Um, I, I really agree with uh, so many, so much of the work that you've talked about, that you're talking about. And I think that one of the things that we can do is use our community partners, because especially on the race and equity, I'm struck by the amount of different groups that are coming up with, you know, so Elizabeth talked about the effort at J Mac. The mayor is coming up with a whole new, you know, a whole new um, structure for doing equity. Uh, the Foundation for Tacoma Students has a big effort. Uh, I'm a part of a consortium with Metro Park, the library, uh, the health department. And so what I'm worried about is that we're all gonna go out and do our own thing and then, you know, get, get competing, you know, competing things. I just really urge us to come together. The other thing is we had our equity design meeting today for, for Tacoma Public Schools. You know, with a, a design team, team of implementers and executors that are really working to, you know, I always say there's this last huge stream that you have to catch, because I mean, that you have to cross for people to get to the real work that you talked about, which is making sure things are fair, that there's equitable outcomes and if there's policy that directs common things that we hear happens in a classroom and we can't believe it's still happening. And they are really uh, working on it. And I think that the efforts that they're making will just bridge well to the outcomes that we really wanna see um, in the classroom. I totally endorse the social emotional learning and I think that plan and that, um, I believe that Tacoma is really way ahead, you know, in, in a lot of those efforts. And that we just gotta bring it to the, you know, the finish line. Not that there is a finish line, but you know, that we keep looking at a progression um, to go forward. And then um, also with family engagement, uh, you know, I've been in this business for forty years. And uh, it's amazing to me that we haven't gotten this, you know, that we haven't gotten this accomplished yet. But I think Cory said it really well when he said that our population keeps changing and we, and we keep embracing more and more people. And every time we embrace, which is the right thing to do through racial inequity, then we come up with more platforms for communication. You know, that people need to have. And uh, so really it is about getting messy and taking time, because you can't do it quickly. It's a, it's slow work. And uh, Amanda has really shown me, um, you know, Amanda has really shown me, we went to a, a little my last, my only anecdote, went to a parent meeting and um, I said, I bring refreshments and I bought, you know, brought salami and cheese and you know, some typical little appetizer things. And she came in and said, what's that? And I brought the wrong kind of snacks. And so she ran out and fixed it. And uh, it made a total difference. And so those are just the things that, you know, you, you have to pay attention to. So I mean, I think all the staff is eager to do the work. A lot of the things that you talked about, you know, we're on the edges of it, or we're starting to do it, and we just need to solidify it until some strategies and get some measurement for it. We're eager to do that work.
You got two minutes. And I think Liz had her hand up, she probably think wanted to say, say something about the alignment goal related to J Mac. Uh, you got two minutes and then I'll take the last thirty seconds to get us over to Wazda.
Uh, just real quickly, uh, when I think about the work that you're talking about, I really encourage you to think about uh, strategy from boardroom to living room. Uh, sometimes simple activities that are accomplished doesn't mean that we've finally reached the uh, destination. Uh, but it will help us continue to make progress. None of these at the end of the year will be arrivals. This is just the next steps. And so if we embrace that, what's a policy level at the boardroom, something at the central, something at the building, something at the classroom and something at the family level. Uh, and then my final uh, encouragement for you is, is when you think about engagement is, is there's an assumption, because folks don't come to buildings that they are not engaged. That in itself is a bias. That uh, we believe every family has to come, engage with the school in some vehicle that we think um, and many of you are parents and recognize that you are very engaged in your child's education. And many of our parents that never show up to the schools are extremely engaged in their child's education. And so I just, I would offer that we continue to remind ourselves. Um, we gotta find a way to make sure that those that want a different type of engagement, seek a different type of engagement, that we break down those barriers. So give my time back if possible.
Director Bond, right? Did you wanna chime in? No? Okay. Well, then I'll offer, so we talked about a lot of very specific things that I think we might um, include in terms of the action plan for the year. But we've got these high level topical areas as our goals. I think maybe Director Bond Bright and I can take our notes and reflect on the conversation and come up with a little bit more uh, oh, not and reflect on the conversation and come up with a little bit more, not very detailed, but like one level down objective for each of these that reflects our, the spirit of our conversation. And then when we start thinking about what will success look like in a year, maybe we can hone in on a couple of those action items that we brainstorm that we want to move forward, not losing sight of all of our ideas, but maybe honing in on what's really feasible for this year and what will, if we look back on this year and we did that thing related to this objective and that goal, we feel really good about. So what do you think about Director Bondbright and I taking this back and then coming back with you all with some summary of our conversation and some possible objective language? Also too, I think, I think that, that's great, glad I'm on the same page. I think too, it'd be great to bring back at another business meeting, the updated goal with the objectives, will we land on them? Because we presented the high-level goal in the meeting, okay. So we'll present the objectives too and maybe use our retreats or additional committees as a whole to keep having this conversation. Okay. Yeah, we did it. Oh, 6:55, exactly. Okay, let's all move over, those of us who are, let's all move over to Wazda and I appreciate the conversation.
Congratulations on being named the Board of Distinction. That's quite an accomplishment. You didn't see that it was every school district, so great job, team.
Thank you very much. Have a great one. Thank you for making it happen.
Good night. Thank you.